I don't see anyone so labeled. I do see Nathan St. Ange as an attendant.
Yeah, uh, no, so that would be Judy and Bob Metcalf that you will want to promote.
And you can, which will promote Mr. St. Ange too.
Good evening. Bob Metcalf with Mitchell Associates. So we are here on behalf of Nathan St. Ange, and I believe Nathan is probably in the wings here, for a proposed lot division for a 5.10 acre parcel that he purchased back in November from the Henchy family. And it was part of a 28.3 acre parcel, which still includes a family homestead. And I can run through some of the plans just to give the board an overview. The plan received a, I mean, the Henchys received a private road approval back in 2016, and the road was actually constructed in 2016. So it's all in place right now. And so I can walk people through, if I can share the screen. Werner, I'll give it a wing here to make sure my plans are where they're supposed to be.
Yep, yep. I think Dave probably needs to authorize you.
Okay, can everybody see the plans here?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm just gonna kick to another plan. This is an overall composite of the Henchy property. And what was the plan for the private road to serve the property? Hillside Ave Drive is right in here, comes in by down to King's Lane. The portion that was extended back in 2017 basically ran from here around to this cul-de-sac. The private road was installed, constructed primarily to serve a 1.8 acre parcel that they intended on putting on the market, which they did, utilizing the family subdivision provisions of the state statute to be able to sell a lot off every five years. We had done an overall assessment of the entire property for the Henchy family before coming forward with the private road process. And as you can see, what is in the dark gray outline in here is wetland on site. And the lines don't seem to quite show up as well. The setback lines from shoreline for the wetlands follow around pretty much in this situation here. There's a little bit of a blip in here, and then a potential additional lot that could be developed over here. So essentially, for the royal land, only a potential three additional lots could have been proposed out here. The Henchy homestead is over here, and that's access off of Ocean Avenue. So that just kind of gives you an overview with your, the total parcel was. And the private access road as constructed, the last home in is where the property, the road started. There are two vacant lots on either side owned by other individuals. And the private access way was constructed all the way through as shown before. And this is what was the original lot proposed. And then these were, again, more clearly the setbacks from the 75-foot shoreline setback requirements. And we had soils test pits done on this lot at the time to prove that it was developable. So since in November, Nathan increased the size of the lot that they purchased from the Henchys to a 5.1 acre parcel. So this is what was the just under two acre parcel that was originally on the private accessway plan and included this area for a total of 5.1 acres. And what they're proposing to do is to develop, create another division in here to create a two acre parcel here and a 3.01 acre parcel. The two acre parcel will be for Nate and his family to build their own home on. And then the 3.01 acre parcel will be for them to construct a home for his in-laws. So it's a, it's a family arrangement, if you will, in terms of being able to develop both lots. So the reason we're here is because by dividing this second lot off within a five-year timeframe constitutes us going to, for subdivision. And essentially, it becomes a third lot because the remainder of the parent parcel that has the Henchy homestead on it actually is the third lot. So that's why we're before the board to discuss the application for a subdivision. As I indicated earlier, the, what was the, what is the two acre lot has a passing septic system that could serve up to a five-bedroom. And on the 3.0 acre parcel, there are actually two test pits that have been identified that could support four, up to a four-bedroom home. So there's one here, one here. The perimeter you're looking at around the septic field locations is the 100-foot setback requirement for placement of a private well. We have not located the wells in any location at this point because the footprint has not been developed, is currently being worked on for the primary home. And I'm not sure where the second home would be located, but those would be identified as we move through the process with the board. So that's kind of the overview of the site. In order to meet the requirements for the subdivision and meeting the 20% requirement for open space, we have carved out of each one of the lots, the open space. The open space on the two acres is 18,645, which is a little bit over 20%. And the second lot has 35,000 and change, which I can't quite even read the text right now. And that's almost 22% of that lot, which would be preserved as open space. And of course, the balance of the Henchy property, there's quite a bit of it that's undevelopable. There are upland pockets, but they're not developable due to setbacks. So ultimately, that probably would be considered as potential open space when the Henchys were to do anything else with their property. So let's see, if I can stop the share and bring some photos up if they're there. Where'd they go? Yep, my photographs aren't here. So... In your, I'll have to go back. In your, in the submission book that we get provided to you, there are some images that show the actual road construction that's been completed so you get an idea. The shots start by where the road extension begins and comes in, gives you a look down from where the turn in the roadway is, and then another shot down at the, where the cul-de-sac is. The Henchys have actually installed the utility poles, but no power or anything has been brought in at this point. Those were recently put in after the lots were acquired. They had held off on doing that until such time as they had sold the property. So I think that kind of hopefully gives the board kind of an overview of what they're proposing to do. One of the things that when we did go through the private road application process, because it was not considered a subdivision but a private road, we did not have to look at the requirements for public water sewer. But we had discussed a waiver requirement, which a copy of that waiver request is in the booklet that we submitted to you, that the extension of public water and public sewer was cost prohibitive to serve one, if not even two lots. The public sewer would require almost 1,200 linear feet of replacement, replacement of existing services and a brand-new sewer line to run out to serve these lots, which at the time, when I spoke with Alan Moyer, who used to be the superintendent, he didn't feel as though that was really a cost-effective means of being able to put sewer out there. And then with the water district, we would have to do a main extension, and that would be a little over 900 feet of upgrade to put in a minimum of a four-inch main to go out through this section, and then replace the existing water services that are along the previously constructed portion of Hillside Drive to upgrade those. And that would have been the same thing with the sewer. There were two homes on Hillside Drive that actually have a small four-inch service that ties into a manhole. Those would all have to have been replaced with a sewer line extension. So the balance of the Henchy property after the, with the private right-of-way, the right-of-way for the private road and for these two lots, leaves 22.12 plus or minus acres of the remaining land held by the Henchys themselves. So be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, Bob, this is it. We're all talking.
I was just gonna say, Bob, if you want, I can pull up the application and run through some of those photographs.
Sure, if you want to. They disappear to my screen.
Yeah. So if you want to just unshare your screen.
Did I do it?
Yep. And then I'll go ahead and grab mine.
And so the first image that Werner's showing, that is where the extension started at the end of what was a pre-existing portions of Hillside Drive. And as I said, that was constructed in 2017. This one is taken right at the turn, looking down the full extent of the roadway. As you can see, the utility poles in there. And then the last one is the cul-de-sac turnaround at the end. The road was constructed to town standards. The cul-de-sac was put in to provide access for large vehicles, primarily your emergency vehicle access to serve at that time a one lot and potential now two lots we're looking at. So.
Okay. I guess I don't have very, any particular questions. I guess if we look at the stuff from 2017, it was just Scott, Scott and me were on the board at the time. And I remember specifically, if you read the finding of facts for that, that it specifically says, we're not, you did ask about a waiver on, and we take no position on it since you're not building any houses. Right. So anyhow, so this is, I believe this road is over 1,000 feet, but it was sort of already approved in 20, in the 2016-17 era. Is that correct?
Was approved in 2016.
Yeah. But I believe it was a 20, it was over 1,000 feet, which violates something or other. So Werner, what do you say about that?
Yeah. So while that may be another waiver that you've got to look at in terms of just the road length limitation and the subdivision regs, you know, so previously, you know, in 2016, the board was reviewing this. Well, you primarily reviewed it because of the, because there was a wetland crossing, you know, that was a stream crossing. And that's really what prompted it coming to the planning board in the first place. Normally, just, you know, a road for a single lot would not have come, would not have come forward to the planning board. But because of the, you know, because of the shoreline, there's a wetland crossing, that's what prompted the site plan review by the planning board, you know, of the project. But, you know, as such, you know, there's no, there's no length limitation, you know, in the private, in the private road standards. But you do have length limitations in the subdivision regs, which, because it's in the subdivision regs, is a weight, is a weight fall.
Right. So that is something you'll, you'll have to add to the, to the, that waiver to the sub-reg. Right. I mean, it is only slightly over 1,000. But it is over 1,000. I don't have anything, anything else at this point. Does anyone who else would like to speak?
I got a couple of questions.
Sure.
You have the maintenance of that road and the coverage basically built into some restrictions and the deeds there. So am I to assume that the Henchys are taking control of that road for a certain amount of time to maintain it and plow it?
That's a joint, I believe, agreement for the use of, for the roadway and their maintenance because they, it primarily also provides access to the rest of the lands.
Okay. Well, the problem is, you say it's built to town standards. It was built to town standards for, for two lots. But when you get to three lots, when you get to the subdivision, and again, you're over 1,000 feet. And, you know, I assume that you might write a waiver, but I, I'm assuming that the fire chief would have to weigh in on it and say it's okay to have that length and that particular cul-de-sac is all right for engines to turn around because now you've got three lots there and you're under the subdivision rules.
Right now, it would only serve those two lots. The third lot actually is the Henchy home, which is access off of Ocean, Ocean D.
Right, right. But now you're going to have two lots, basically at the end of a cul-de-sac on a road that's over 1,000 feet. You might want to review the standards for subdivision right now, presently, to make sure that the edges of the road, the width of the road, all the standards that you find in the subdivision regs actually fit that road today. And also, I would assume that you'd want to get the fire chief to sign off on it.
Which would, is part of our step, so.
That should be part of, I mean, we've got to see this, this plan like twice more. So it'd be part, it'll be part of that at point. You need to do that. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, certainly as part of our process, we'll solicit input from the, you know, from the departments. You know, but, you know, the purpose of the sketch plan is the, you know, is what I call the, hey, what do you think meeting? You know, to just, you know, to vet out any questions, you know, or concerns, you know, such as the ones that Nina raised, you know, in terms of verifying road width, you know, for consistency. And certainly, I know the chief will weigh in on this. You know, I've had some preliminary discussions about the project already with him on it. So, you know, it's one that, you know, that we'll both be looking at.
Okay. Well, that's, that's all I had.
Werner, one quick question. The, the open space requirements, is that the percentage? Is that, is that a dry percentage or does it matter if there's wetlands inside in the open space?
Now, there's a, there is a percentage of open space that needs to be upland. I'm not going to be able to quote it off the top of my head for you, but there is a, there is a percentage of that total area that needs to be upland.
So that, that would need to be in, in your actual plan, calculations in your plans.
The majority of what's on the two acre lot is all upland. And I forgot what the ratio is on the second one. That's why the second one's a larger, you know, open space.
Yeah, it's probably true. I mean, just looking at it, I think, I think it, you know, the open space has got a lot of wet on the, on the top end of that picture. So just get the number for us when we, when you submit the final, you know, the preliminary plan. So anyone else have anything for the sketch plan here?
Yes, please.
Okay, go for it.
So help me get my head around you saying that this is a three lot subdivision. To me, we have an application from the person that purchased a five acre lot. And before five years has expired, he wants to divide it in half approximately. To me, I've got a two lot subdivision. And we should be treating it as such. There must be something I'm missing here.
Well, I'll let Werner clarify that, but it's because the Henchy property is the parent parcel that the five acre lot is carved out of.
Yes, I understand that.
Parcel, the 5.0 acres constitutes a division, which would follow into the family subdivision. But by creating the second lot out of the five acres, it constitutes three lots being created out of the parent parcel. And Werner?
Within, you're saying that within five years from the previous?
Well, within a five-year timeframe, I think, you know, the simplest way to look at is that if you have the creation, if you have, you know, three lots within a five-year timeframe, that fits the state statute definition of a subdivision. There are, there are numerous exceptions to that. But this, you know, this particular proposal doesn't meet any of those exceptions. For, you know, for example, the property owner, you know, could purchase the five acres, right? And then they could hold the five acres for five years. And at the, at the, at the five-year timeframe, then do, then do a division. And per the statute, that would not be a subdivision.
Right.
Right. But because in this particular case, they wish to do the division immediately, it constitutes a subdivision, and that's why it's here in front.
But, but to clarify, you're saying it's a subdivision of the parent property?
That, that's correct. Yes. So the main part of the larger parcel. Yep.
So, so have you, just to push this a little bit, again, I'm just trying to get a feel for it. What would you think the name of this subdivision would be?
I don't think any name has been given or thought of for this.
But it's, it's a Henchy subdivision is what it is.
Essentially, it could be.
I mean, 80% of the land is, is Henchy land.
Correct.
And then when we look at the subdivision regs, we have to look at it as it applies to the 28, is it 28 acres, the total?
It was 28. The right-of-way was taken out of that.
Yeah. So the approximate, the sum of the three lots, we have to look at how the, for example, how much open land is preserved, has to be 20%, is that what we said, of that quantity? That's the subdivision we're talking about. Not just this five acres.
That's right. Yeah. The five acres is, is, if it were just the five acres, that's an exempt division that we wouldn't be seeing yet.
Yeah. So, so when we're looking at that, I mean, that, that's, and I'm not seeing that from the application as it's written, but, but that's, that's how the preliminary will, will deal with it, right? And if it was just dividing the, the five acres, we wouldn't care about the road. The road's pre-existing. It's outside of the five acres. And now we're saying this, this subdivision, this 28 acre subdivision, even though it only has three lots of it, we want to know how the subdivision regs apply to that.
Correct.
We just, I just, it seems to me that if I'm going to think about it, I need to think about it as a, as one subdivision. I think if you go try to name it, that'll, that'll drive, drive this point home. Are you going to have an HOA that's going to manage common land among these three or, or not?
Well, with the open space for, and maybe this is a communications that Werner and I didn't click on completely. The open space that would be dedicated on the two lots we're talking about, that Nate has, would be maintained by those lots. It would not be part of common open space.
I see.
Subdivision. So then what it would be is for the Henchys to basically preserve whatever the percentage of acreage is out of the remaining land.
I see.
To be able to.
And you would, you would, you would do that via deed restriction in some way?
Well, I'm gonna have to have conversations with the Henchys on that. But that's probably what it would have to be. And there's portions of that site that are inaccessible anyway as far as any future development. So.
It, it seems doable, but it, it's really just a way of looking at it that wasn't clear to me. I think I understand it better now. I had another question had to do with, I personally don't, don't have a problem with, with these being wells versus public and septic. But I, I wondered about the sufficiency of firefighting water in particular. And you'd want, I would want to see something from the fire chief that said, I'm satisfied. Either, you mentioned in the application, something about hydrants that seemed a bit distant.
Yeah.
Yeah. So likely.
That was a concern.
Likely what you're going to see, so whenever you look at your subdivision regs, you wind up with a number of, you know, you have a number of choices as it relates to fire protection. You know, you know, one is that you have a water main and you have a hydrant, you know, that's within, you know, that's within a certain distance of the home. That's one, you know, that's one resolution. The second resolution is, you know, which we don't see happen very often anymore, would be the construction of a fire pond. You know, I would, would say at some point, you know, if we were to, we were to ever get into housekeeping, housekeeping mode again on the subregs, I think you would find, you know, department support, you know, for removing the fire pond as an option. You know, that just, they become maintenance, maintenance issues.
Understood.
And then the third option is, you know, and what we've seen, you know, recently, and I think is for these types of, for these types of divisions, you know, is the preferred option would be the requirement that the homes install a 13, a 13B sprinkler system in the home.
Sprinkler system.
That's right. And so that's, you know, I think, you know, in a situation like this, that, you know, what you would find is likely the preferred method of fire protection for the home.
It's also, it's also a benefit for insurance.
Is it? Yeah. That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. Larry, do you have anything?
Well, my only question really is around potable water supply. I know you want to drill a well, or some wells. And some, you know, I just am wondering whether you wanted to do some test well to make sure you had, the soils were going to be able to deliver the volume of water. And then, of course, the other question that comes to mind is that, I know this is pretty close to the ocean, and just wondering what the potential is for saltwater intrusion. I mean, once saltwater intrudes, you can never stop it. And so even if you start out with wells, you may discover you want to, you have to lay a pipe sometime in the future. Anyway, it might, it might be worthwhile just doing a little bit of, you know, geological examination and maybe drilling a shallow test well just to see whether you're going to have sufficient water to support the houses. That's all.
Well, I do know that the grade elevation change between where this lot is and where the water is, it's a significant grade change. I don't have the grades in front of me as to what that changes, but I'm going to guess it's probably somewhere in the order of almost 50 feet of grade change to where the homes would be located. And by the nature of the wetland situation all the way around it, you know, it feels that that's a pretty reasonable expectation. But we can obviously, Nate can have a conversation with some of the local well drillers to get some of their input on that. It was a benefit for you.
Well, I'd appreciate that. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Scott, anything?
No, all set. Thank you.
Okay. John?
Thank you.
Hey.
Hi, John.
Bob, how are you?
How are you, yourself?
This, this being a sketch plan, I guess you, this is, you now have pretty much our, the board's feelings on this, I believe, as to where it heads. And so beyond that, we don't, there's no votes associated.
Oh, I understand that. Yes. Does the board want to have a site walk on this or?
Wouldn't hurt.
Sure.
Yeah?
Yeah. Yeah.
So what I would suggest, I mean, you can do it a couple of different ways. You know, in terms of a site walk, you could, you know, we could do a site walk once we've received the preliminary application. You know, just keeping in mind that, you know, a, a formal site walk is something that's going to have to be noticed, you know, as a, as a meeting. And so, you know, in the context that that was to occur, you know, we would, you know, we would likely want there to be notification, you know, for that. Or I think there's also the option, I'll just throw this out, certainly for the board to, you know, for members to individually.
Yeah, I think you're right. We should probably wait for the preliminary to be here so we can look at a more complete thing if we come up with any questions. Plus, it'll be later in the spring, so there might, there might be muck instead of ice. But, you know.
Well, the road's pretty good condition, so if we stay on the road, we shouldn't have a problem.
I see. Okay. All right. Well, so I, you know, thank you for the presentation. I guess the only thing, I guess I would like to have a volunteer for a case manager.
Okay, I'll volunteer.
Okay. I just knew you would.
Okay.
Very good. So I think that's, that's everything. Let's, you have to think of anything, Werner?
I think it's, you know, I mean, no, I don't have anything additional to add at this point here. Again, other than, you know, the plans have gone to the departments and, and, you know, just knowing that fire suppression is the question, you know, the chief and I have already, you know, started talking a little bit about that, so.
Good. Okay.
Thank you very much. And Werner, I'll be in touch.
Okay. Sounds good.
So I, this is really nice. I will take a motion to adjourn now, please.
It's all moved. I moved to adjourn.
Okay. Second? I'll second it. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. Thanks. Bye.